And we were dealing with the electric matter, we'd close the public comment. And the question before us is, should we authorize Mr. Wright to take the term sheet and turn that into a revised full contract to bring back to us? Do I have a question correct?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I've got a twinge going on in my back, but I'm good. Thanks. Fire away.
So, I would make a motion to authorize Mr. Wright to move forward and bring back to City Council an amended and restated contract of 2008 implementing the terms on the deal sheet for first consideration by the commissions and consideration by the City Council.
Could I amend that to include that he does not proceed with that until we have a waiver from FPNL? You know, we already opened up our question for having more lawsuits with OUC going out for the RFP for public power. Yeah, we have an existing contract with FPL. Before we start negotiating another contract, we need a waiver from FPL to protect the city.
I thought Amy said something about that when she was talking.
We do not have a formal waiver, Mr. Old. And I would not proceed any further until we do.
Isn't there a waiver between OUC and FPNL already when they decided, before they signed the FPNL deal?
That waiver is three-way between us, OUC, and FPL. That waiver just allows these discussions to occur. It does not bind any of the parties to agree that whatever otherwise occurs is okay.
So is this a new deal, or is this, can we just do this as an amended from the old deal?
I'm going to tell you what I think, and then I'm going to answer Councilmember Turner's proposed amendment directly. In my opinion, and I've exchanged correspondence with FPL on this previously, earlier this year, when we were looking at the November deal very seriously back in March, the only aspect of the asset purchase and sale agreement between us and FPL that would be violated by entering into the amended and contemplated amended and restated agreement with OUC is the requirement that we could shut down Big Blue. That, under the existing purchase and sale agreement with FPL, we are specifically obligated to keep Big Blue running. We discussed this. We don't see a problem with it. FPL doesn't see a problem with it. You know, I don't think there's going to be a problem getting a sign off from FPL that the contemplated new agreement with OUC does not violate the APSA and signing off on the Big Blue.
Is that with the same certainty that you felt that OUC wouldn't have any objection to going out for RFPs for power? And then we receive a scathing letter from them, and we have no bidders that would participate, and the whole effort was wasted? Yeah, was that same level of certainty? Well, with that said, I certainly would say that we need to have something in writing, a waiver done before we proceed any further.
Let's listen to our lawyers.
Councilmembers, this is your call. And I'll do whatever you want to do, as I say, as long as it's legal and ethical, and you haven't asked me to do anything that is...
What should we do, Mr. Wright?
Here's the problem that you're in. We have an opportunity to get new rates in effect on October 1st. We can, if you wait to proceed, and I'll tell you, OUC is drafting the agreement as we speak. That I know for a fact. So, it's a matter that I haven't, I've seen some very rough draft red-line sectional amendments. I haven't seen an integrated document yet. But if you wait, you may miss the October 1st date. That's the only concern I have. Now, and I would say, I'll talk to my colleagues, Mr. Bryan in particular, today. And I gave him a copy of the term sheet. I told him truthfully that it's essentially the same as, with different prices. It is essentially the same as the term sheet from last November that they've been aware of for eleven months now and haven't shown any real problem with. But I'll ask him if we can expedite the FPL sign-off on the waiver as to this not conflicting with the asset purchase and sale agreement, then ask him to start that process today. That's best I can offer you.
Other than the upcoming election, what is the significance of the October 1st date?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month for the rate pay.
Lower rates for customers effective October 1st as opposed to effective later, and thus not being realized at all because the termination date of the PPA is still going to be December 31st of 2023.
Thank you.
And the only modification that I see in this is that you're going to level out the demand charges, that it's on Attachment A?
That's my recommendation to you, that you allow us to negotiate exactly what that trajectory of the demand charges will be as different from. It'll be the same present value to OUC, but it'll be different from those charges.
Okay.
In a manner that is reflected on the graph that I gave you that shows, I didn't put what it would be with theirs in there. It would be steeper. The blue line on the graphic, if you use those charges, would be steeper. I've suggested something.
Zero slope.
It's not zero slope, but it's a lot flatter.
All right.
No second. Further comment by council? Comment by the public? Seeing none, a closed public comment, I'll call a question. Ms. Fox, a roll call.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Passes four to one. Godspeed.
Thank you. And you too. See you soon.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item for discussion, please? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes five, nothing. All right, that moves us, by the way, before I start a public hearing, and it's going to take us a while to get through all this, and I've got some comments at the end, the things I want to talk about under personal matters that are probably of general interest. But when would we want to break for lunch, and I'll aim for that, whatever that is? Twelve-thirty possibly, or, because we won't get through it before lunch.
That's fine.
Twelve-thirty sounds good.
Okay, we'll aim for the closest time we can get to twelve-thirty. All right, now we're dealing with 4A, which is legislative, an ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida relating to restaurants dealing with or in alcohol beverages and located within 500 feet of school facility, providing for conflict and separability, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Staff comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. For the record, I'm Tim McGary, Director of Planning and Development for the city. The proposed ordinance before you amends the city's regulations related to separation between restaurants and schools related to the sale and consumption of alcohol. As I explained to you in the first reading, that the current regulations prohibit the sale and consumption of alcohol beverages in a restaurant during school hours between 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. We provided a graphic that basically shows the 500-foot line that's in our current regulations from the Freshman Learning Center, and you can see it impacts our southern part of the downtown. This whole effort came out of, I got discussions with several developers and investors in the downtown, as well as concerns about the proposed cultural village area and the dampening effect this would have on cafes and those other types of activities. One of the things this does, it does bring our regulations into conformity with the county's regulations, which got rid of the prohibition on the 500-foot separation from schools a while ago with restaurants. The planning zoning board unanimously recommend approval of this. Yesterday morning, the Historic Downtown Economic Development Group also recommend approval of this. And unless you have some specific questions to me, I would open it up to hearing.
Questions of council?
Just a quick question. I've seen established license for sale of beer or wine for consumptions or whatever. I assume that hard liquor is not included in this?
No, hard liquor is for restaurants, but they have to be, remember, restaurants, 51% non-alcoholic in food part of there, so you can't have a bar. This does not allow a bar.
No bars, all right.
All right, public comment. Come forward, sir. Identify yourself and tell us your point of view.
Mr. Mayor, good morning. My name is Michael Richter. I'm with Integral Real Estate. I have purchased a couple of properties in the downtown area with the hopes of redeveloping them and redeveloping the area. By background, I'm the owner of the Majestic Plaza, the Kmart Shopping Center next door, as well as the owner-operator of Vero Bowl, and have, I think, shown what we can do with regard to helping change what was already there. We purchased a building right across from a very popular restaurant called Avanzari. I'm sure many of you know, all of you know. And the building directly across, used to be the post office, actually, for City of Vero Beach. It's a great building. It's historical in some ways. We also have the lot next door, and we have tried to bring in a new concept there. The idea was to create an actual working brewery with a taproom and a restaurant component as well, obviously. However, you would be hesitant to do that, invest those types of dollars into that type of a business with respect that 180 days a year that school's in session, you can't sell your primary product during the school days. Now, during summers, during weekends, during holidays, that is not the case. But when you come during season, during the year, January, February, March, where school is in session, obviously, the winter is here, you would be, you know, a Tuesday is a Saturday when you're on vacation. And so, for us to bring in that kind of investment, and you're talking certainly north of a million, closer to two, between the real estate component as well as the brewery component, it's hard to make that investment when you're not able to do so. I also believe personally that for the future of downtown, I sit with Barbara Hoffman on the Cultural Arts Council. I believe in the downtown area. I believe that it can be, it already is, but it can continue to be redone and become a source of positive development there. But it's hard to do so when restaurants can't sell a drink during the day. And by the way, just for full disclosure, currently, there are some places, for instance, Avanzari, Bachi, that have that right, by the way. They are able, and they do, sell wine and beer with no issues on one side of the street, but on the other side, you currently cannot.
You've done a very good job with the theater center. Thank you very much for doing so.
My pleasure.
And the building you're talking about is the one across the street, which right now doesn't look too good, right?
No. In order, it's an old building. In order to build it back up, you have to tear it down almost, and it's been, yeah, it's about to get transformed.
Well, if we pass this resolution, and I'm certainly going to vote for it, I'm going to be interested to see what you do to make it look better.
Yeah, it would be great. Any other questions?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Richter came to see me, I guess it's been about three months ago, and he is actually putting his money where his mouth is, and so his investment downtown has been really primary, and he's brought a couple of new businesses down there, so.
All right, a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Vah?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. That moves us to 4B, which is also legislative, a resolution to the City Council of Vero Beach, Florida approving the transmittal to the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. The second item, that really, Tim, does that title even need to be read?
No, it doesn't. Basically, what you're doing is you're taking action on the resolution. You're sending the ordinance itself, which is that item, to the DOE, and it'll come back to you for a formal adoption at a later date.
I'm sorry, you were doing good reading the title of the resolution.
Okay, well, and I think that brings us to a good point. We are going to read these two together, B and C. Is that incorrect, Ms. Vah?
Just, we're going to just read B. C is just the transmittal.
Okay. A resolution to the City Council of Vero Beach, Florida approving the transmittal to the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity of a proposed ordinance amending the future land use maps of the Vero Beach Comprehensive Plan, providing for conflict and separability, providing for an effective date.
And the only thing I would add is that the second ordinance, it's a change in the future land use to residential low requested by the Anglican Church for that property. So, that's what's being, so unless you have specific questions to me, Mr. Mayor, I open it up. It is a hearing.
Okay, I'll open the public comment. Please come forward, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bruce Barquette with Collins Brown Barquette over on Beasley Boulevard. This is simply correcting an error that's in your comprehensive plan. This property is zone GU, or, I mean, its land use is GU, which is governmental, and it's in the middle of residential area, and as Tim pointed out in your staff report, that's incorrect. The zoning is already consistent with the land use that we're requesting. Right now, the current zoning is not consistent with the land use that the property is, so this is just correcting that error. We're here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Bruce, the correction, is that how it's stated on here? Because I mean, I'd hate to motion to approve this and then have the error be approved. Was it the error is just in the statement given, or is it in the written?
No, right now, the property's got a land use designation of GU, and as your staff report indicates, the GU land use designation is not appropriate in the middle of a residential section.
Okay.
And it was GU because it was a school, but the school is gone. The school board sold it. Private enterprise bought it, and Anglican Church is going to propose to put a church there. But you're, right now, your zoning is not consistent with your comp plan. So, does that answer the question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know where the error was, so we didn't approve it.
The error was in, the error is in the current land use.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, any further public comment? Seeing a closed public comment, any further council comment or motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Vah?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. That moves us to 4C. Ms. Vah, in 4C, is this a single hearing, or is this coming back?
This is the final.
This is the final, okay, thank you. 4C, an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida requested by promised land Anglican Church to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map by changing the finance, the future land use designation from governmental institutional public use to residential low for the property located at 665 20th Street, containing 15 acres more or less, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Staff comment?
Mr. Mayor, that's the ordinance we're sending on to the state. That's all right. You sounded very good reading that, so I didn't want to interrupt. We're moving on to the next, to the next on the agenda.
B, D, 4D.
Yeah.
And E.
Okay, these, Tammy told me we wanted to read together. Is that not correct?
These can be read together, just need to be voted on separately.
And this is quasi judicial. I'm going to read 4D and then 4E. 4D is as follows, an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida amending the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map by changing the future land use designation of an ex-land from Indian River County designated by designation C slash L Commercial Industrial of the city of Vero Beach designated C Commercial for the property, properties located at 1660 and 1690 U.S. Highway 1 and Dr. Richard E. Billington subdivision containing 1.32 acres more or less, providing for an effective date. And the E provisioned part of it is an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida amending the ordinance official zoning map by changing the zoning district designation of an ex-land from Indian River County designation CG General Commercial of the city of Vero Beach designation C1 Highway Orientated Commercial for the properties located at 1660 and 1690 U.S. Highway 1 and Dr. Richard E. Billington subdivision containing 1.32 acres more or less, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, if you all recall, on July 2nd, this...
Tim, you may be sworn in. It's quasi judicial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I...
Thank you.
Anyone else need to be sworn in on this?
Please raise your hand.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. Very good. On July 2nd, if you all recall, the city did adopt the ordinance annexing the subject property at the corner, southeast corner of 17th and U.S. 1. Basically, what we're doing today would be approving the change in future land use and the zoning to comparable designations under the city regulations, and that would be the, from the commercial industrial in the county to our commercial, and from general commercial zoning to C1 zoning. These are basically the same. They're very comparable, and the different types of uses allowed. So unless someone has a question to me...
The applicant wants to say anything?
Yeah.
These are all set. Thank you, Todd. Public testimony? Seeing none? That brings us all the way down to council discussion, really. There's nothing else in between, I don't think. Any council discussion? All right, seeing none, a motion by council member?
Can I be on each separate ordinance?
Right. Okay, and we're looking for a motion on the first one of these two, which is 4D, an ordinance of the city amending the Comprehensive Plan Future. I'll make a motion to approve it as written.
Second.
Ms. Vah?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Can you just tell me the effective date? It says provided for effective date. Is this the first reading?
This is the final public hearing.
This is the final, okay, yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. All right, I'll make a motion on 4E, an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, et cetera. And it was seconded.
That was a quick second.
Any council comment? Ms. Vah?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mrs. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yeah.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Passes five, nothing.
Thank you, council.
All right, that brings us to 4F, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida dedicating city-owned parcel Track A, Points at a Park subdivision as public right-of-way, providing for an effective date requested by the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, please.
This is part of, this is part of the agreement that we had with the county. This is the last piece before all the documents get recorded. This is the little piece along State Road 60 that we agreed with the county to dedicate it so that the DOT could use it for their work on State Road 60. It is your final ordinance, your final hearing on this ordinance.
Public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Council comment or motion, as you see fit.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Vah?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. That's five, zero, is that correct? I didn't hear.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to resolutions, five. 5A, a resolution...
No, G.
G.
Oh, I'm sorry. The G part of it.
Is Rob around?
Psalm. I think he's sitting on the, I think he's out the door.
Okay, I'll read it anyway, and we can come back to it.
It's the city attorney, so I'm not sure.
Rob would have to talk to the amount of the money, but if you have any questions on that, we're fine.
You want me to read it, council, please?
Yes.
Okay. 4G, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida establishing a special assessment leaning in the amount of $21,610 and no cents for a septic tank of fluid pump step system to serve the main property located at 800 Bahiamar Road, Vero Beach, Indian River County, Florida, providing for an effective date requested by the city attorney. Rob, do you have a comment on this one, please?
I could just go ahead and let you know, this is to secure payment of the, this is a multi-unit property. I don't know how many units.
Six.
Six units. So this covers the expense that the city would incur in the step system being installed to serve the entire property. And we would just need to make sure, if the property owners here, they of course get to speak on the...
It's to allow payment over time, is what we're doing there.
Right. And the resolution sets out the payment terms.
But the reason this is coming before councils is kind of an emergency matter? We're going to professionalize this later on?
I think what you're going to see with all of these, anyone that goes ahead and finances over time, and I anticipate mainly the multifamily units that will be doing, because they're the ones that are having a larger bill than a typical residential family, and specifically because the way that the, that we've set everything up, you're allowed one credit per property owner. So in the case of a multifamily unit where you have six property, you know, six units, they have six impact fees that would be charged, they get credit for one, and in essence, you know, what they're really financing, the bulk of it is the impact fees, is what they finance over time.
Yeah, they may have addressed my question, because you're waiving, yeah, interest on the assessment, and it's because of the six impact fees that are effectively there.
You're not really waiving, in essence, you're saying you're waiving the interest.
That's what it says, right here.
But they don't get credit for the line in front of the property, so there's $1,100 charge that the, that they get charged versus the cash-paying customers don't. So, we're not charging an interest on top of their payment over the 10 years, but they are paying that $1,100 that if they would have paid cash, would have been an incentive that they would have not paid for. So, in reality, you could say that they are paying something other than a cash-paying person over time. That's why, that's why you only see the multifamily customers that are, that I see are the multifamily customers that are, that are requesting these payment plans.
But it would be, but it would be available for a homeowner as well.
It's available to any other person, but when you look at the typical installation, there, if you choose the payment plan versus the $1,100, it's about a 4% interest rate that they would be paying. So a lot of people are saying, well, I'm not making 4% in the bank, so therefore, I'm paying cash. And that's what I'm trying to get to, but when you see a multifamily complex where their total charge is $21,000 versus, say, $3,000, then they look at it and say, well, you know what, I'll take the $1,100 hit because now my interest rate is maybe a half a percent or 1% or something like that. Plus, they normally will recoup those costs now over the 10-year period through the rents of the people that they have in there, and therefore, it's not really costing them anything, and they can expense it.
Who has the effective date? December the 1st?
I think we made the December 1st because, in essence, what we're trying to do is, on these, instead of billing them each year, if they can roll it into, it shows up on your tax bill, then they will receive that on their November tax, or on their, I guess it's November tax bill.
It's a non-avalorem.
It's a non-avalorem. So, if we can go that route, we will, because it makes it easier for finance to just collect it through the tax side of things. If not, then they will have to render a bill each year. In any case, we set the December 1st date so that if some customer comes in, say, December 2nd, they're going to make their first payment when they apply for the application, but then they wouldn't get their bill until the following December 1st. So if somebody came in on November 30th, they would pay the first bill, but then wouldn't get it till the following, they wouldn't get hit with two payments in one year, in essence.
We worked very closely with the finance director so that we had the mechanics work with her system, with her accounting system.
Okay, so that's how the date was established, because it just seemed kind of...
Yeah, historically, what they would do is to bill, I believe, in November.
Right.
And you were due by December 1st. But actually, you'll notice the way it's written, it's really their obligation to just pay it, whether they get sent a bill or not. So she wanted to make that clear, and she did want a penalty in there if they were late, and that's why you'll note, if they don't pay by March of the next year, the entire balance is then going to be charged interest from then on. So that's an incentive for them to pay timely throughout the entire term.
That's a good idea, and I like the provision that the unpaid balance is due in full in the event they sell. The property is, just changes ownership. The property is, changes ownership.
And that was the whole key for the lien, so that it gives you the mechanism when they're going through a real estate transaction that they can see now this document that says, hey, there's a lien on this property, and we got to make sure that it's payable upon closing.
It's completed.
All right, public comment on this one, please? Seen none, public comments closed. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger.
Yes. All right, that brings us to 5A, resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, adopting the 2015 revised Indian River County Unified Local Mitigation Strategy, providing for an effective date requested by the Public Works Director. Staff comment?
As it says in the resolution, this is done every five years. It allows us to be eligible for FEMA grants when a disaster hits our area. And it is in coordination with other cities as well as the county.
Public comment? Seen none, close public comment. Discussion of council or motion as you see fit? Does this make it easier for us to work with FEMA at all, or any revisions?
It is never easy to work with FEMA, but it gives us eligibility to work with FEMA.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second. Well, wait a minute, who did the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
He seconded. Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger.
Yes. That brings us to 5B, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, providing for the continued administration of first response and law enforcement service by the city of Vero Beach Police Department on certain Vero Beach Regional Airport real property pursuant to requirements by the Federal Aviation Administration, providing for payments from the airport fund into the general fund for said services, providing the method of determining the amount of said payments, providing for adjustments thereto, providing for an effective date requested by the airport director. Staff comment?
The next three resolutions that you have are part of the response that we will be sending to the FAA. And if you look under my matters, that's where the compilation of all of this information is going to be attached to a letter that we will send in response to the FAA findings on the airport. What we're asking is the council by resolution to say these are authorized by the city council, not something the city manager dreamed up. And then it'll be attached, sent in that response, and then hopefully the FAA will be satisfied. That is a real pipe dream of mine, but we're hoping that something like that may occur. But these resolutions are addressing particular concerns the FAA had in the operations in our communications and in our workings between city departments and the airport.
These things seem to go back and forth and back and forth. Is this normally what goes on, or have we got some real issues?
It keeps Americans at work, Mr. Old. And it's one of those things, if it's not FAA, it's FEMA. If it's not FEMA, it's the Department of Justice. It seems like we have an awful lot of people, as a matter of fact, they just got an email from the Public Service Commission. Again, we transmit back and forth on a pretty regular basis with federal and state agencies. It is typical, and I think Eric could address it even more than I, because he has to deal with the FAA on a pretty regular basis. They are a relatively slow-moving organization, and so when you send something in, you don't expect a response in the next 30 days. But when they send you something, they expect a response in the next 30 days. And that's just the way that it works.
Is there something that we should be concerned about, or really, I mean?
The thing that we're concerned about is making sure we respond to the FAA, because it's millions of dollars in grants, as you see on our runway, and we want to make sure that we're in good stead with them. Philosophically, we do not agree that we should be paying royalties on the water because we get our permits from the state. But at the same time, when Eric applies for runway improvements, we don't want to jeopardize that. So we think we've worked out a fair compatibility of that operation.
Any public comment? Seen none, I'll close it. Any further staff comment, or something you want to say? I mean.
I have some questions.
Oh, sure. You're fine, go ahead.
Everything Jim said is correct. Jim put a team together of department heads that were affected, and we have a deadline date of September 14th to respond to the Federal Aviation Administration, and we're well on track to do that. But as you mentioned, these three resolutions that are part of the package need city council approval.
Go ahead, Ms. Sir.
Within this resolution, and I think this is a great way at least to be addressing some of the FAA concerns by having these resolutions passed. The $90,000 per year for security services for the airport, is that, are you comfortable with that within your budget? Were you involved with definition of those services?
Yes, ma'am. It's a budget number, and it will be reconciled. If you look at the resolution that we're referring to, the Vero Beach Police Department Resolution, on page three of the resolution, Section I, Section 2I, that is the part that really the FAA is looking for, the reconciliation part. The budget had always been placed in there, and it was fair as far as staff could see, but there was no way to really check it. And all we did was we budgeted a number and then charged monthly based on that budget number. What we added in is the reconciliation. At the end of the year, it'll either go up or down based on actual cost, and that's what the FAA was looking for.
And should we be successful in looking at obtaining a commercial airliner at their regional airport?
Thank you. Let's get that name out there.
Absolutely. And will that impact your security services?
I think there will be an impact. You know, what happens is TSA gets involved, the Transportation Security Administration, and they actually provide the staff at federal cost. So it'll be much like the air traffic controllers that are all paid for by the Federal Aviation Administration. We will have security and screening provided by the TSA. Now, we're starting off with a smaller airline, as you all know, so it's not going to be much of a cost either way. But eventually, as things, if it gets really busy, there would be additional services required from the local law enforcement officers as well in order to cover the general security for the airport area, terminal especially.
All of these resolutions really have a history. For example, the police protection back when there was airline services, that's where most of this number came from. And then we've gone through that period. So, and again, as Eric says, I think every department director that's responsible for this have sat down and sat across the table from each other and worked out through the processes. The only new thing is where we're paying royalties on the water extraction.
I think it's great to quantify these numbers. I know we had gone through a period of time where the general fund was supplementing itself by charging the airport with undocumented costs. And I think at least this way, we've agreed at some numbers that we can reconcile as to what the actual airport is utilizing.
Right. You know, we've really had the best finance director for, you know, we've ever seen. And, you know, I think with Cindy and Peggy reviewing all these documents, I'm very comfortable with them.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Right. A motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Did we do all three, or just the?
We have to do each one.
Okay.
So now we're on 5C. A resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, providing for the withdrawal of water from certain Vero Beach Regional Airport real property by the Vero Beach Water and Sewer Department as part of the city water well field and water pumping system, providing for payments from the water and sewer fund into the airport fund for said use, establishing the amount of payment, providing for adjustments thereto, providing for an effective date requested by the airport director. Staff comment? Jim?
Again, this is just another part of that letter that we be responding to the FAA. This is establishing the royalties for water withdrawal. Again, philosophically, we do not agree our water permits come from the state, not from the FAA.
A public comment? Seen none, I'll close it.
Question?
Counsel? Go ahead.
What's the reason for the price difference between this superficial aquifer and the Floridian aquifer?
Water quality and cost of treat. I mean, and there is a, there is a underlying argument of, from a hydraulic standpoint, that the water in the superficial aquifer truly does come from the water, the rainfall that falls over the airport. The water in the Florida aquifer comes from Gainesville and north. So, you know, the whole argument of the water rights itself is another issue, but mainly water, water quality and cost of treat is how we differentiate it.
All right, public comment? Seen none, I'll close it. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. All right, that brings us to 5D. A resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, relating to administration of groundwater remediation for certain Vero Beach Regional Airport real properties and related costs, providing for effective date requested by the airport director. Staff comment?
Again, this is a standard, we've been doing this treatment, and this is due to the pollution and environmental issues dealing with the affected area. As we explained to the FAA, there's been a lot of research, a lot of study, a lot of reports done to try to figure out who is the agent that created this environmental issue. It sort of dates back to the US Navy, but those of us who have been involved with the Department of Defense, they actually will not become involved in these type of discussions. It actually is on the airport, so therefore has an airport responsibility. City owns the airport, but at the same time, it's governed under FAA rules.
Public comment? Seen none, I close it. Counsel? I make a motion. Make a motion? Mr. Olds makes a motion, I'll second it. Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Mayor Winger, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Since all of the items in six simply just have to be read?
Yes.
If Ms. Vok could maybe whip through those, I think we can finish without leaving for a break.
That's fine.
If that's okay with you guys.
That's fine. If you'd like her to read them, have her read them.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Old and Ms. Turner?
Just for the public, we have to read these and, to be heard on September 1st as part of the procedure. Go ahead, Ms. Vok, have fun.
6A, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, repealing Resolution 2013-40, establishing prices and fees for Crestland Cemetery, establishing hours of operation, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date. The hearing will be on September 1st, 2015. B, an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, relating to the city's septic tank affluent pump step system program, amending certain subsections in Section 78-83 and Chapter 78 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach, related to payment options for step system charges and fees, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. The public hearing on this will be heard on September 1st, 2015. C, an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Part II of the Code of the City of Vero Beach, relating to medical marijuana dispensaries, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date. The public hearing on this will be heard on September 1st, 2015. D, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, repealing Resolution 2009-26, adopting updated rates and fees for the Vero Beach Municipal Marina, providing for an effective date. The public hearing for this will be heard on September 1st, 2015. E, an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Section 82-31 and Chapter 82 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach, relating to vehicles for hire, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. The public hearing on this will be heard on September 1st, 2015. F, an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, requested by Robert Rennick to amend Chapter 31 Boats and Waterways and Chapter 63 Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements of the Land Development Regulations, related to leasing of dock, dock space, and boat slips to non-tenants in C-1A and C-1B zoning districts, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. The public hearing on this will be heard on September 1st, 2015.
Great, that moves us forward to you, Mrs. Vok.
And I just have one item. We have a new appointment to the police pension board. We did receive an application from Mr. Gregory Buttle, who would like to serve on that commission.
Motion to approve.
Or appoint. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post passes five, nothing. Anything further for Mrs. Vok?
Yes, I do have an issue, Mr. Mayor.
I have one too, but go ahead, you are first.
Well, it seems like it kind of attentioned that we do have a, there is a travel policy for city council that's in our city council book, which requires any travel, schools, or whatever to be reimbursed from the city to have advance approval by council. And, you know, we've been pretty lax at this one. I think it's great to have education and to go to these things, but I think the reason the policy is there is because the past, there have been significant abuses. And I guess what really made me concerned was, okay, are we, we have policies, does Ms. Vok get to pick and choose what policies get complied with or what don't? And if the policies are not going to be complied with, why bother having them if we're not converting them to code? That they're irrelevant. So, you know, looking at the policies that we have on the book, that public comments should be added to all city commission boards, no documents would be presented with redacted material. I mean, anyway, reviewing those, I'd like to have a discussion on the policies.
I know at one time, maybe about a year ago, I had brought those to council, and we were going to incorporate them into a resolution, and that was never done. So maybe it's time to think about doing that again.
So how do you determine which policies you comply with and which you don't?
Well, this is, it's just, it's just a policy book that I have.
So for you, it's irrelevant, whatever documents are there, have no meaning and no hope. I mean, that's what I'm trying to determine, what's the significance of this?
I know, but I think there's a better way to determine it. Is there an abuse that you think that we need to talk about that has occurred?
No, it's just that there have been certainly travel things that have not been approved by the council according to the policy.
Such as?
Going to, you know, to the school, FL, Florida League of Cities training programs, the recent convention, et cetera, which are great. Once again, I said, I'm not objecting, I think any training is good for the council, I just think, you know, if we have a policy, we should comply with it. Are there the wings, you know?
I think the question is of the policing of it. I don't think it's the clerk's job to police it. I mean, she's an employee of us council directly. You know, I'd appreciate, you know, maybe reports of the travel policy, and then the council can make the decision on it.
And if it's the same policy I looked at with Tammy, I really don't see where it says in advance, it just says reimbursement has to be improved by the council. I don't know if you're looking at something different.
Says accept with advance approval of council, verbatim.
That's not the one I saw. That's not the one I saw.
Well, that's what's, that's what's in the travel policy book.
So I just went to the League of Cities thing, and my understanding is that on the council, we said, okay, Randy, you go, and the council paid for hotel, I think it was two nights, and I didn't, I'm not asking for reimbursement on my car or anything like that, and that's, that was done. Now, should I have done it some other way? Are you?
I didn't realize you had council approval, Mr. Old. I don't recall that being at a meeting, and it could have been something I missed, but once again, your request to attend and to have that 455 registration fee paid by, by city taxpayers, it should be for the purpose of transparency brought to council.
Yeah.
And just saying, hey, there's, you know, of course I want to go to, this is it, or, yeah, it will incur two nights, et cetera. Ms. Vok is writing those checks for the administration, and you should be aware of this policy, so.
But I wasn't, I wasn't aware that all of you guys were getting your mileage reimbursed till the other day. I didn't know that was going on. So, I mean, everyone's doing, I guess, what they please.
So you need to have a clear policy.
And I'd appreciate that, I mean, if you want me to bring this to the council each time that a council member requests to, to travel somewhere, I would be glad to.
I'd like to see a report on it first.
Okay.
What would the report have in it?
Just curious.
The report of the expenses of what's been racked up.
Yep.
It gives an indication of severity if it really is a problem or not, but it just needs to be out there. You know, I agree with transparency.
Once again, I'm not saying it's a problem, I'm saying you have a policy, and you're either going to comply with it or you're not, you know, and have what. I mean, the reason the policy existed in the first place is because back in 2007, whatever, there were some significant abuses of it. And it's for transparency, we're trying, we're expending taxpayer money, it should be open.
Right.
To tell us to go to a class or a school, I don't think it's any problem, it just should be clearly open.
Completely agree, yeah, completely agree.
All right, Mrs. Vok, another issue. We've gotten recently a fraudulent blog, and it uses an organization, I don't know that the organization is important, but it was the Indian River Neighborhood Association, and somebody used their letterhead, put it out on something called The Observer, and it's completely fraudulent, they advised me, it's 180 degrees different than their policy or their opinion. All I'm asking of the city council is that we not electronically forward those, and Mrs. Vok wants to give us a hard copy, I suppose that's okay, but I don't think we should participate in known fraud, there's, you know, there's going to be a complaint on it and so on. Does anyone have any objection? Seeing none, I guess we'll go on to see city managers' means. Matters?
City managers. The first item is the land use response to the FAA. As you know, we received a letter in January the 15th, 2015, from the FAA with findings. This is a request that the city council allow me to send this response to the FAA. It will include not only my draft letter, but also the Vero Beach Airport acreage report. There was a discrepancy in the acreage of the airport because we had had some right-of-way issues, water and sewer airstripping tower resolution, the Vero Beach Police Department resolution, the water and sewer resolution, and the city attorney's legal opinion regarding water extraction and the water and sewer water extraction resolution. And so this will be what we think is a complete response to the FAA's letter of January of this year.
Anyone have any comment on that?
If I hear no objection, I will proceed in sending the letter.
Proceed.
Of response. Second item is the third quarter electric utility rate sufficiency. We have this finance director here with us, but the bottom line is, is we're recommending reducing the rates for, starting in September. It's a one and a half percent on a typical 1,000 KWH bill, which equates to the dollar eighty-five, dollar eighty-five per bill. We will proceed on that unless there's objections from the council.
All right, further matters for the city manager, please.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. One, one, could you address the St. Francis Manor Bridge and what is going on there? Whose responsibility is and what authority we have to deal with it?
The city has absolutely no authority. It is on county, it's off of a county street, it was authorized by the county when they constructed that road, and it's a jurisdictional issue between the county and St. Francis Manor. The city has no role in that at all.
And do we know what the county's planning to do there?
No, I don't. I know that we have received calls, we refer them to the county, and I'm not sure what their plan is.
Okay. And then my second question is, the, one of the discussions at the MPO meeting that I subbed in for Mr. Kramer at was talking about where the county's progress is with all aboard Florida, where it could be going, where it could not be going, but what are we doing, what's our plan B? And do we have one, and are we starting to work on one to mitigate the impacts?
But we have a couple of things in the public safety, for example, reflecting in your budget, the police department has set up that plan where you have two officers west, two in the central part, and two on the beach side, and that gives us that security of the police issue there. The second is, we have not received the 90% design of the crossings, but the railroad has put in their environmental impact statement, still has in there, two crossings being closed, 20th as well as the flyover, which the city council is on record as objecting to that, and we will continue to object that we think that those, until the council takes further action. And so we are still pursuing that, but until we get the 90% design criteria, we will have to know at that point if, what it covers, if we want to go to quiet zones or something in that particular neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Is there provisions in there for quiet zones? I mean, it looks like if this thing comes down, it'd be nice to be able to have that option.
Until you get the 90% design, and then you try to weigh that against what is required for quiet zones, you won't know what that cost is. I don't think they're going to meet the total 100% in the, to be fair to the railroad, I don't think at any time they said that except when they were trying to get our support. But the issue really came down to that they are going to meet a great percentage of the need for a quiet zone, we just don't know how much that is, and we don't know what that additional cost would be. And we're not really sure if we really want quiet zones. You know, it's been argued both directions in this chamber. One is quiet zones are good for the guys that have to listen to the horns, but it's not really good for the people that encroach onto the railroad right of way and can't hear the train.
All right, further matters for the city manager? Seeing none, city attorney, matters for him?
I don't have anything else unless somebody has an item.
All right, Mr. Kramer, 10B1.
Okay, well. My, my hope is, is this is an easy one, we've had the Postal Annex land there for, sitting vacant for quite some time. You know, Peter Gory and I have been looking at different assets that we can monetize, and this is probably one of them that would be nice to, to sell off, similar to like Dodger Town. If we can, you know, sell off some of these, these assets, get them back onto our tax rolls, and, you know, use the, use the amount of money to pay off debt. You know, the one caveat I'd like to see there is just, you know, is the oak trees. If you've, if you've been there, there's a lot of beautiful oak trees around there, and I would hate to see that corner, you know, just turn into a big, you know, a big parking lot. It'd be nice to be able to keep the, the trees there, but, you know, what I'm doing is I'm asking council permission to, to go ahead and have Jim put that up for RFP and see what we can get for it.
Let me ask you one question, I'm in favor of doing what you say, so it's just a question. Do we need to spend the money to have an appraisal to know if we get an offer that is one we can accept, or we just put an RFP out? I don't, I don't care, but.
I think there are two issues that we have to address. One is that it is part of the FPNL contract, but I think that's, should be relatively easy to get a replace, replaced from or removed from the FPNL contract. But remember, we at one time did not want the substation because we all realized there's going to have to be a substation in that area, and we wanted another location. And the old postal site has the transmission lines, which would make it a feasible site. Now that we have that Phase 1 report on the site where the power plant is, I think we all realize that's sort of a negative number if we go in there and try to make any major developments, so having a substation there is probably not going to be a negative. And, and so we get it released from the, from the Florida FPL's contract with us and sort of take care of that, that issue and, and address that. The other is, is that you really do need an appraisal, I think we'd be shooting from the hip. I have had several people who have called, who are very interested in the property, I will tell you that ranges from everything from a retail to like a Cumberland Farms or that type of major service station. And so when we put out the RFP, we, you know, could put in there that we want to preserve as many of the trees as possible, but it is going to be a very active commercial spot. One of the positives to it, and I think one of the, the value added, is that the Miracle Mile is being very successful, this is very close to that, and a couple of the developers that I have personally talked to said that that is, is really truly an added value. But as we all know, the Cumberland Farms type of facilities are sort of becoming a commonplace around in our area, and so they may be a high bidder on this, this piece of property, but I think we need to really get an appraisal so we know what our, our values are.
I'd make a motion to, to proceed with it, we can discuss it, proceed with it after getting a appraisal of what it's worth. Mrs. Turner?
I was going to say, I knew some time ago when we were looking at the possibility of ever moving the waste treatment plant off the riverfront, that that's, that area might possibly be needed for tanks, for rese, or whatever, since we're lucky enough to have Rob here, maybe he could address that if there was any. Are you foresee any future need for that to liberate the waterfront?
No, I think when we went ahead with the Forest Main project, that was really the reclaimed water line from the wastewater treatment plant all the way over to the water treatment plant site, that any tankage that we would need could all be constructed up at that point and then convert that line into, you know, the reclaimed water line or whatever we needed. I don't particularly see the need for that site for, from a water and wastewater.
Yeah, water sheet inside. And yet, if we were ever going to liberate the riverfront area of the power plant from the sub, with the power plant and the substation there, that substation would need to be relocated.
It could be relocated virtually on any corner of the lot, but it will be a large substation.
It, yeah, and I, I would think that's certainly something to take in consideration. Obviously, the first step would be to declare the, the land surplus, and I don't know if you, I would suggest we probably do an appraisal before you would go to bringing forth that kind of a resolution.
Well, do you want to make a resolution to have an appraisal?
You got a motion.
Before declaring it, or do you want to second my motion?
I'll second the motion.
Well, I don't think we need a resolution to get an appraisal, we'll go out and just get an appraisal, we do that on city property anyway, and then we'll bring that back to you, and if you want to.
Before we declare it surplus, is what I was thinking, is the resolution.
I'm much more for making sure that that's not property we want in the future. I mean, I, I'd, selling off bits and pieces without an overall plan that says this, this property is not part of what we see as a visioning part of, of Vero, then we go ahead and sell it. But I, I think it's too early to go ahead and start selling bits and pieces until we are sure we know where we're going to be in 10 years or 15 years and, and say, okay, that's one we don't want, and then go ahead and sell it. I don't, we're not in financial distress to sell things, and I think we really need to do some planning, and once we do some planning, I think the idea of selling things off or, or getting, getting some fair value for them, and then, or being, get taxes for them, I think is absolutely terrific. But I think, I think it's too early to be doing that yet.
At that proximity, close to where we're finding, I agree with you, Mr. Old, I mean, it has a great potential for, you know.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
We could, we could really mix things up by selling it too early, that's all.
Yeah.
Ms. Graves, what do you think?
And we live in our options. Um, I don't think it hurts to know what it's worth, just, just to know. I mean, there may not be, there may not be a lot of value in selling it.
There is a cost, and so we want to make sure, the only reason we really get appraisals is when we're going to sell something to recover our cost, so I would not recommend just doing appraisal just to find out a value if that's the interest of selling.
But I mean, if it's, if it's not worthwhile to sell, and it'd be more worthwhile to hold on to to move, I mean, that's the thing, we, we don't know what value it holds to, to us right now. We, what value does it hold? Is it worth more to have?
Well, right now, it's being, going to be utilized for the, the waste treatment recycle bins that are going to be stored on it from now until December.
But in the future, does it hold more value for us to hold on to it to use for these other projects, or is it more value to sell it?
Well, if you believe the real estate market's improving, and if you, once you liberate the waterfront of a, of a waste treatment plant and a power plant, yeah, certainly you would be increasing the value of that property.
Financially, we have no gun to our head now to sell stuff.
Historically, I think there was an offer of $3 million for it at one time, you know, right around 2008, 2009, when they, when the city looked at.
Before it crashed.
When the city was looking at leasing it for 300,000 to somebody that was going to build a facility on there, there was an offer from, from somebody locally for 3 million dollars, I think it was for it. But today, what it's worth, you know, because you went through a major recession and you have a real estate that's climbing back, but just to give you a ballpark historically, because I don't think there's anybody left here that was here about that time.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, you know, we've got a lot of financial things that we've been talking about when we go through budgeting. You've got a tax rate that's, that's got to go up this, this season. Next year, you've got the same, same pressure, you've been talking about OPEB, and, you know, the, the stormwater thing, if you don't want to go and, and do the authority, you've got to find money there as well. I think you are under some financial stress to, to get some of these, these properties back on the tax rolls and get some money to pay some of the debt down. It's, you know, it's a council decision, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, to get property back into, to active service, and I definitely don't like to increase taxes if I don't have to.
So we have a motion and a second, I guess we'll call, roll call on it.
Mr. Old?
No.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes three to two.
We, we will proceed with the appraisal and then bring that back to council for a resolution to declare it surplus and move forward.
All right, I'll make it brief in the interest of times, but two things I want to talk about just briefly. One, I've, you know, watched some of the tapes of recreation, I believe, and marine, or recreation, I guess is the tape I watched, on the rowing club, and I think that's a worthy cause, they've done a, they've done a good job, but I think finding a place for them on the east side of the river is a worthy cause, just my own opinion about it. Talking about the matter that Mr. Kramer talked about, which I think he's exactly right about, Jim and Cindy and I had a conversation the other day. First of all, I think, Cindy, you're talking about bringing forward for the general fund a reserve policy as part of the September, well, Cindy's not here.
Yes, she is.
September 3rd meeting, correct? Beginning policy?
No.
No?
No, we're, please, Cindy, she, she's been working on the budget, we don't have that policy.
No, I, I understand that, but how are we, you know, I, I guess my question is, maybe I misunderstood, and I'm sorry, the question is, we need some sort of a policy on the general fund reserve, in other words, what is adequate, what's more than adequate, and so on, because I think Mr. Kramer and Mr. Gory have made the point that if it bills forever, in effect, you, what you're doing is you're, you're taking funds from the public that should in one way or another be returned to them. So I guess my question of the council, you, Jim, is how are we going to come up with a reserve policy, because I think we need one.
We, we will start that process, but it's going to be pretty extensive, because there are layers of what you want to do and the protection of your reserves, so it'll probably be after the first of the year before we would have something to the Finance and Utility Commission for their consideration, assuming you want to use both of those commissions. At least the Finance Commission would have to review that, and Cindy would work in that direction.
Does anyone want to weigh in this? I'm, I'm happy with the answer, it's just that, is, we need to do it.
It's complicated, and, and I just think it really needs some good consideration from, from everybody before we, we set a policy and before we dive into it, yeah.
And you're the banker, you would know better than anybody.
Well, I, I, no, I, I think this is, this is peculiar to cities, but I, but I think it does reflect very definitely, our management of that is, is either wise financial management or not unwise, and that affects our credit rating. So I think it's important that we do it right, so.
All right, thank you, I guess. So you're working, that's where we are.
Yes, sir, and like I say, it's, we've got the budget, we have the auditors coming in to visit, and, and I think that this is going to be somewhat of an extensive project.
During, during our discussion on the Finance Commission, when they made the recommendation they made for this year's budget, which I indicated to them, I bring it back to them for first quarter of, of the coming fiscal year so that we could have it done before we got it to next year's budget activity.
Okay, two more things. One, on the Dodger Town Golf Course, I believe it's free to take action on now, is it, or is it not?
The last piece is what you did today, that resolution, which we'll get to the county attorney, and then we're going to arrange to record everything at the same time, which ultimately removes the restrictions. So I'm guessing we need like a bare minimum, a couple of weeks to make sure everything's recorded and ready to go.
The city of Park was still part of the deal.
But you could certainly start any RFP process or whatever you want to do, I suppose.
Yeah, then we'll get an appraisal of that property as well.
Mr. Kramer, what do you see with this? This is your area, you're the one that came up with it, I mean, it seems to me like it should be sold.
With the Dodger Town property?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I mean, it's, you know, euthanized property is not something I like to see. I mean, you know, I think, I think Randy's got a good point, I mean, maybe we need to be thinking about, you know, future direction as what we do with the land, but, you know, I mean, that, that piece of property's been sitting there for a long time, it could have had, could have been paying taxes on it, and we could have used the, the funds for other purposes. It'd be nice to have something done.
Is there any, I mean, are you going to have it appraised, or where are we going? That's, it's a question of council.
Well, I think we do the same process, you, you appraise it, and we'll look at the appraisal, and we'll declare it surplus if it's plausible.
Okay. We'll proceed in that direction.
Okay, the, the last thing, Jim and Cindy and I talked about the not to exceed rate, and we will deal with this on September 3rd, and you just, to bear my own feelings, I mean, I, I would never get as high as the not to exceed rate, I guess that's all I want to say. I mean, I think we're faced with a tax increase, I actually had the first three calls yesterday I actually had the first three calls yesterday on the subject, and, you know, you can look at the, since we have the Press Journal people here, you can look at our taxes, and despite the fact that they compare very well with others, I, I think going from 204 to 264 is more than I can stomach, but we'll talk about that on the 3rd. In other words, I think there's going to have to be a place in between, and, and I don't want to comment on that at this point. That's all my comments. Mr. Kramer?
I'll try to be brief. We did go to the, the Korean War anniversary at the Memorial Island to celebrate the, the Korean War. You know, Vinny did an absolutely wonderful job. I'm glad to see that a lot of our, our council members showed up there. The, the weather actually was very nice, and very tolerable. The Recreation Department had a junior staff recognition. I was glad to see that an awful lot of the kids were there, and a lot of kids were introduced to the responsibility of taking care of other kids at the Recreation Department. Also, the Aerial Atlantic Circus, one of the great things that our Recreation Department does. You know, it's, it's amazing that rec, rec staff does that, gives up their weekend, and gives up so much time to, to help that out, and parents, you know, they've, they've got some really talented kids. I did attend the Indian River County Housing Authority Back to School event, got to talk to a bunch of people up there at the Orange Housing District, and had a, had a cookout, it was very, very good, it was really a very clean place, I was really happy about that. We had the mayor's golf cup at, at Bent Pine. That turned out amazingly well. We got talking about getting kids involved in, in golf, and, and possibly using the Recreation Department to help out in that. And then finally, we did, well, I guess we didn't bury the capsule at JC Park, but we were there for the, there for the dedication. You know, it was kind of a funny thing, we did the, did the press release, did the pictures, and I went back to Monty's office, and there was the capsule sitting right there on his desk, but I trust that the Public Work Department now has that, has it buried.
And they have a big boulder over the top of it, because that was one of our concerns.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Looking at correspondence, just going to call, council attention, a memo from Glenn Brovan, who's on our Finance Commission. And the Finance Commission recently passed a resolution saying that we would use $1 million from our general reserve to help reduce, reduce this tax increase, and to use that to pay our debt. The problem with this is that even if we're looking at only a $700,000 tax increase, it's still 400,000 short of the combined payroll tax increase. So we're still passing on another 400,000 that will be short for next year, coming up. So are we, that's why this reserve policy is so critical, is that I hate to see us robbing the reserves until we have a set policy. There'll be a legislative session on Wednesday, September the 23rd, and I thought council should be thinking about what issues we may, we may want to bring forward to the state legislature. Surely, I would like to see us come up with something more, again, to try to support our home rule issue on short-term rentals, and that the legislators interference in that issue.
Could I stop you there and make a suggestion? I, I think we should, today, Mrs. Bach and I, and Chef Wright, and the city manager and I talked about getting on the agenda, as we did last year, which was useful for an electric update, but I, I think any other thing that you want to add, we should go ahead and have her add at this point, because having gone through this two years, if we do it today, and she does it tomorrow, we'll be up high on the agenda, which is preferable to being at the end of agenda, or not having room. So if anyone has an issue...
Yeah, and the deadline, I was just going to add, is September 14th. So whatever, whatever we want, we have to have by the next meeting, I would think, to do.
I would tell you that if you have an issue, and I think the electric one deserves an update, because it'll come up from somebody, whether it's from us or not, and I think that needs to go. If anyone else has an issue you're, you're certain of, I would put it on the agenda sooner than our next meeting, rather than later. That's, excuse me for interrupting.
No, but I say, it's just something that I think that we need to be addressing as, as a city council, so that's why I bring it up.
Go ahead.
I attended the Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. They are going through their, the long-range transportation plan. They, the next phase, we're making, they have their wish list of long-term, long-range plans, this is, and will be refining it to, to see those plans that are cost feasible, which they, we have to have a cost feasible adopted plan by December. Discussed the widening of US-1 from 53rd Street to 510. They're trying to minimize any encroachment on the local businesses, and possibly, to the extent of you, and requesting a waiver from FDOT on those areas. Wanted to thank everyone who supported the sheriff's effort with Vero Bowl for United Way, that we had a, a great group out there supporting United Way. For those who don't know, that the Elliott Museum in Stewart has an exceptional exhibit on deep-water luminescence. That'll be available for the next four months in the community, and I encourage anyone to go. They have a, a 22-foot squid there for, on the floor, drawing, so you can get a feel for how big these underwater animals are, and looking at the deep. I know Mr. O'Connor was there with his grandchildren, and it's a, a great outing, and as we get moved towards season, to make that available.
Yes, and if you're a member of the Vero Museum, you get free pass into the Elliott Museum. They have the work in your relationship.
Yeah, great, great point on that. Also to say that Orca has 12 Kilroy's are deployed, they're going to have another 13 by October 2015, and if you go to teamorca.org, you can actually see the Kilroy data. The Kilroy's are, excuse me, are monitoring our water quality around our lagoon area, so it's a wonderful thing to see what's going on, and luckily, that the state has continued to support the monitoring effort on that. And that's all I have.
Ms. Graves?
Okay, I attended the Race the Rec with the VBLA, I got to squeeze the air horn. It was great, and I also feel very confident in our lifeguards. They did a three, the winner was one of our lifeguards, they did a three-mile paddleboard, and I think under like 28 minutes, which is really impressive if you've ever been on a paddleboard. I want to remind people, the 8th Annual Shore Pound is going to be Saturday, September 5th, also supporting the Vera Beach Lifeguard Association, and Downtown Friday is this August 28th. I hope the weather will hold. And then, I have a question for council. I was looking around, we get the Quality City magazine that comes from the League of Cities to show what other cities are doing, and I was, I went further and looked at some of the other cities, and some of them have a mayor's service award for teenagers, I think it's between 14 and 18 that are residents of the city, to acknowledge students who have hit above and beyond service hours, and I'm just wondering if that would be something we'd be interested in creating, and I can bring some of the other programs back for you to look at, and I just think anything we can do to recognize, A, the kids in our community that are working really hard, and then, B, give them something that is maybe a little leg up in the admissions process for college, which is so competitive, I, I don't see how we could lose.
I think it'd be terrific, seeing all the volunteers at the rec that have been all the hours for the camp.
I mean, the fact there's thousands of hours. Yeah, so let's, let's recognize them here. I mean, we give proclamations, let's give us some service awards and help, and recognize the contribution that our younger members are making, so that's all I have.
Okay, Dan.
Ms. Oll?
I've been to two things. I, I went to, not this weekend, but earlier, I went to a training program for new county, city council members, and I thought that was really, really good. I was a little hesitant to go to it, and, and it was recommended, and, and I, I learned a lot about other cities and what was going on. Then I went to this legislative, this Legal Cities thing, which I'd learned a lot there, too. I, I didn't realize how many people are involved in cities around the, around the state, and how many layers of people are involved in this, and learned a lot, lots of different sort of subjects that came up that they, they have good speakers about, and one of which was this, this whole sharing community kind of thing, where, where people are not only sharing houses and cars by, by the, by the, the U-Drive things, or the, the Airbnb, or Lyft, or, or all kinds of different programs that are going on now, where people use their cars to drive people here and there. But also, the thought of, of sharing retail space between different parties and things. So they, they were going into lots of different things, and this is part of the legislation they're bringing up, is, is the whole short-term rental thing. They're saying that they want the state out of that whole decision process, and they want the cities being in charge of it, so that's on their...
The home rule.
That's on their legislative agenda. And is this the agenda that you were talking about, the things that they push forward?
No, no. Every year, there is a legislative session that is chaired by our representative, Ms. Mayfield.
Okay, oh, I see.
And, and the two senators that chair our area come. And, and this, that's probably another good topic the city should talk to, that, that Ms. Bach should put on the agenda. I don't know, I just suggested.
Yeah.
But what happens is, you have currently Senator Nagrin, Altman, and Mrs. Mayfield here, and they push legislation, and they also can have local legislation. And it's, it's important to be represented and talk about it. So, I mean, I, I think the short-term rental is something we probably should add to our agenda, of the things we want to talk about.
Anyway, it was very good, and I, I, I think going to each one of these things is, is something I think we've got to get the travel policy straight, but I mean...
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
But it's a good idea. It really opens your eyes to, to what's going on around the state, and I think it's important to do.
Especially when you're, yeah.
When I'm a new kid on the block.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but that's it.
All right, Ms. Graves, the motion, adjourn.
Mayor, can I just remind the council that tomorrow morning, we have the dedication of the mural at Bezel Creek, and that's at 9:30 in the morning.
Yeah, thank you.
Question to adjourn. Does it need a second?
We're adjourned.